The reason why we're here today is, as you know, in October of this year, of last year, 2019, the Board of Education went ahead and awarded a contract to start construction for the new elementary school that's going to be over on Folkestone Road. Have you guys seen that area yet? There's a lot of stuff happening right now. It's a rainy season, and we know, but it's going to get better. We've got it, we factored that into it, and we're building it up. So it's going to be a good, good location. One of the things that people asked was, well, why did we pick that location? And one of the things that we had to do is when we started looking at the student growth in the Stump Sound area, Stump Sound Township, we knew that Dixon Elementary was way beyond capacity. Does anybody know how many mobile classrooms we have right now? About 22, 23 mobile classrooms, a ton of them, okay? And we knew this a couple of years back, and so we've been working with the county very closely. And we've been, and we were able to get some funding to build a new school in this area. We also know that in the Stump Sound area, this is the fastest-growing demographic in the county right now. So we knew more, more students were coming, and we had to do something quickly. And so we're in the process of building the new school. As I mentioned, the Board of Education awarded a contract to Daniels &amp; Daniels, and we started construction. But building a school takes a while, okay? Normally, once, once the contract is awarded, it takes about two years for the school to be built, 18 months to two years. We anticipate having this school completed or built in a certificate of occupancy by June of 2021. So that doesn't mean next year. That means the following year, students will be going to that school. So students will actually be going into the school in August of 2021. So we're talking, but at the same time, we knew we had to start looking at a redistricting process because we're building the school. We know that the community, the parents, and the students want to know what's going to happen. And so we began the redistricting process. And so what we do is, we research the options. We go in there, we take a look at the options, and we say, okay, well, how, how do we play this out? With this, with this school system right here, with this area right in here, it was pretty straightforward because Dixon Elementary was so overcrowded. A lot of times what we were looking at was actually sharing, I mean, splitting the school up into two, two components. And so one, one part of the school goes here, one part goes over there, but it's still within the same Dixon Elementary school zone. Does that make sense? So this school district, redistricting or realignment, for the most part, is going to be just taking the existing Dixon Elementary school district lines and, and splitting them down the middle almost, as far as student population is concerned. So what we, what we do, we looked at the, so we started looking at the redistricting lines. We knew it was going to be Dixon Elementary School, and maybe a little bit of Southwest Elementary and/or Meadowview Elementary too, just, just a handful. And we said, okay, now let's look at other things. What about student population growth? Okay, over the next 10 years, is it going to grow? Well, we know, I think everybody's been shaking their head about Marsoc, and everybody's heard about Marsoc. Well, once we started doing this, we got the word about Marsoc as well. And so one of our scenarios, Scenario 3, has more students coming to the school than what we may, may do in the future just because we didn't realize Marsoc was coming at the time. We want, so we may be looking at different scenarios here, but we want to make sure that the new school that, over on Folkestone Road, no name for the school yet. So I may call it, so if I call it Southern Elementary, Stump Sound Elementary, Folkestone Elementary, Coastal Elementary, it's all the same thing right now, okay? So we'll, we'll have a name pretty soon for it. But, but because we know Marsoc and, and the community in a, in its whole is growing, we knew that we had to leave some space available for it for the next couple of years because we know there's going to be influx of, of parents coming in, military and parents coming into this, into the Stump Sound area that we need to have additional space for. We don't want day one, in August 2021, saying, okay, we need five more mobile classrooms, put it over there because we didn't do the redistricting correctly. Okay, so once we, once we did look at all the population growth and projections, then we started laying out maps. And what we had helping us, who we had helping us was North Carolina State, and they've got a, they've got a department that actually works with transportation and also works with student optimization. And that's called ORED, NC State's Organization Research Education Laboratories. And so they worked with this, we talked about it, and they came up with some preliminary, preliminary maps. Well, this is, this is great. And we took these maps and we looked at them a little bit closer. And that's when staff went back in and transportation looked at it, and also school administration looked at it. And said, okay, well, we need to tweak it here or there just because transportation. Doesn't make sense to have two buses going down the same road. So we want to be as efficient as possible. And so we looked at that, and we started tweaking it some. And that's where we came up with the three different scenarios. Now, once we have the scenarios, we have to present it to the community. We gave it to our Board of Education so they could review it as well. Now we're bringing it to the community. And what we'd like to do is show you these different scenarios, get your input on it. As, as I mentioned, we've already created some maps with the different scenarios. We've also, and what we're doing right now is we're looking at, making sure that we present it to the community as well. I think I just covered this slide just a little bit earlier. So the proposed Southern Onslow District scenarios. And if you don't mind, I'm going to walk around a little bit. But basically, what we're talking about is when you look at this, this tan area right here, and this salmon color area right in here for Scenario 1 and the tan area, that's basically the current Dixon Elementary school district. The only exception is, is over by Hawes Run. I think we added five students from, from Southwest Elementary that was included in that as well. It just made sense transportation-wise to include those, those students in that area. But what we're looking at basically is the Dixon, Dixon Elementary School Zone District, School District, and we split it in two. Each of the, each of these different scenarios, you'll see Dixon Elementary will be the same. When you're coming down 17 over by Dixon High School and the old Dixon Middle School where 210 is, it'll follow 210 all the way down until you get down to the beach. And at the beach, that's when the new Southern Elementary will be taking over and bringing it in there. So all three scenarios, Dixon Elementary School will have the same district. So when we look at Scenario 1, same thing we talked about before, okay? Only this time we change colors on it to keep you awake. And so what you have here is you have your purple and your green. Dixon Elementary is right here, but this is where the new Southern Elementary School is going to be. And it goes all the way up. Pardon? 210. Okay? Pardon? Yeah, right. Yeah, 210. That's 210, right? So if I'm looking at the, the map right here, this is 17 coming down. Here's 210 basically coming down this way. Now, there may, because 210 is, it's going to look at both sides of 210. If we have some development, we do have some development coming right across Dixon Elementary School. And so that's going to be a part of Dixon Elementary. But for the most part, 210 is the delineation for the two, two districts. This is the new one. Okay. One of the things to remember when we start talking about this is currently Dixon Elementary students, kindergarten through fifth grade. And I'll go into that a little more detail. We have approximately 1,300 students right now. The school was only built for about 650 to 700 students. So that's why we have 22, 23 mobile classrooms on campus as we speak. The new Southern Elementary, if you look at Scenario number one, if we use this scenario right here, we're going to take 663 of those, I mean, 658 of those students from Dixon Elementary School plus the five over in Southwest Elementary we talked about for a total of 663 students going to the new Southern Elementary School. Now, these numbers are current numbers right now. Realizing in two years, there's going to be some adjustment to it by a handful of students one way or the other. Because we, two years from now, I can't tell you exactly. I'm going to have 663 students. I may have 665, I may have 650, 670, but somewhere in that area. Pardon? Could have 800. And we've been looking at that right now. One of the things to take note of is the new Southern Elementary. I told you about Dixon Elementary having about 650 to 700 student capacity. The new Southern Elementary will have 804 student capacity, okay? So in this scenario right here, you're going to have approximately 140, 150 students capacity, I mean, extra capacity for the growth of Marsoc if need be. Anticipate base growth is based on the base giving us the information. We've taught, we've worked with them quite extensively earlier in this process. We were told it was going to be 800 Marines in 2021, 800 in 2022. But, but at the same time, just recently, within the last month, I think it's been announced now that it's been dropped back down to 900. So it's going to be 900 over the next two years instead of 1,600. Yeah, part, yeah, part of the thing that we do on an annual basis. And it's on our website too. And as a matter of fact, we're getting ready to release the newest, newer numbers coming up. But we do a 10-year student projection for all, all the schools. And that's based on ORED's projections, and we do land use studies. And we go in and do a detailed analysis of each school and the capacity they have. And we've got color-coded charts showing this school's out of capacity, this school's within capacity. Then also what happens if you use mobile classrooms? Then does that change the capacity levels of schools? So we do a lot, all that, and we have a 10-year student projection for now. And we're more accurate within the first five years. Second five years, who knows? I mean, it's, it's something that we project out, but at the same time, the base changes quite a bit. And so it's a little bit more variables when you get five to 10 years out. Scenario 2. It looks almost the same as Scenario 1. Is we've gone all the way up to Hardy Graham Road, up, up that way. It still includes Paget and Hawes Run. Then we include Hardy Graham Road, which includes some of the neighborhood up in that area too, which would be Bank Woods Road, Formosa Drive, Coolbreeze, and Revival Center Road. Some of these roads are that we've actually incorporated. What that does is adds an additional 13 students from Southwest Elementary School into the district. Okay, remember Dixon Elementary is still going to stay the same. We have 635 students that we, we estimate that's going to be there for 2021. Then with the new Southern Elementary, it would open up with 671 students. Our capacity for the new Southern Elementary is 804. So we still have room for growth with that scenario. But what we've done is Southwest Elementary School, logistically and transportation-wise, it makes sense for us to bring the buses all the way up that way. And that's a feeder zone for the middle school and high school. So by doing that, we, we relieve about 18 students from Southwest Elementary, which is over capacity right now. Buses are already up there anyway. And when we're looking at, and Mike, and Amanda, Shay, Nadia, and tell me if I'm saying this incorrectly, but by taking the buses up that way, we're probably, some of the students may have another five or 10-minute bus ride. But the other side of it is, this is their feeder zone where at middle school, they're going to come down here, and high school, they're coming down anyway. Transportation-wise, it's, it's a, it's a better fit. And so that's what we were looking at right there as one of the scenarios. And also Southwest Elementary School is overcrowded. So if we can take 18 students, that's a classroom right there. Scenario 3, that's where we go all the way up to 53. And also alongside, south of 53, which is right here, way up there, I'm not going to jump, okay? And then it's west is William Gerganus Road. So that would incorporate some of Meadowview students. Okay, that would be approximately 51 students in Meadowview. That's right. Down in Maple Hill. And so when we're looking at that, what you're seeing is Dixon Elementary School. Remember, that doesn't change, 635 students in August 2021, give or take. The new Southern Elementary would open with 722 students. So you're going to be about 85 student capacity that you haven't filled yet to, to adjust for Marsoc or, or any student growth in the next two to three years. It would take 18 students from Southwest Elementary, and then it would also take 51 students from Meadowview Elementary. And Meadowview Elementary is at, at capacity right now as well. And even though we brought the line all the way up to 53, it's still, the, the district line still is within the feeder zones for the middle school and high school. So we're not having them go all the way up. And then all of a sudden, they're coming down to Southern Elementary, then they have to go over to Southwest High School or to another, another school after that. They're going to be down in the Dixon area. All right, so in a nutshell, I'm a numbers guy, okay? And this is what we're looking at right now. If I'm looking at capacity, I look at capacity two different ways. I look at it with brick and mortar, and I also look at it with mobile classrooms. Mobile classrooms, while they're, while they're necessary to address overcrowding, they're not a good solution. And I always make sure people understand that. Right now, does anybody have any students in the mobile classroom? There we go. Couple things that we don't like about it is it puts a strain on the core capacity of the school. In other words, we got a cafeteria that's built for, let's say, 600, 700 students. Then all of a sudden, you got to feed 1,300. How do you do that? Well, the way you do that is you have more lunch periods. You may start feeding at 10 o'clock, 10:30 in the morning, and don't get done until 2:30 in the afternoon because you have to get everybody in to eat. That's because the school is beyond the core capacity. It's, as more students then can meet the core capacity. Bathroom's another thing. Just security issues is always a concern with this too. I mean, mobile classrooms aren't as secure as a classroom that's in a hallway. We know that. But these are just things that we have to, to make do with for the short term until we do actually get the brick and mortar in place. So when I look at capacities, and I look at construction and how we look at, and how we look at when does a school need to be built, we look at the brick and mortar, okay? But I put it the mobile, I put the campus capacity, which is the mobile classrooms. I put that up there as well just so you could see it. But for Dixon Elementary School, our brick and mortar, we have about 684 students we can fit. Remember, in our scenario for 2021, we're looking at 635 students. And Scenario number two and Scenario number three, that gives us some growth in that area of about 50 students. The new Southern Elementary School, our operational capacity, our brick and mortar, 804 students. We haven't put any mobile classrooms out there, so our campus capacity is 804 students. With Scenario 1, we're looking at putting 663 students in there. Scenario 2, 676. Scenario 3, 727. Southwest Elementary School, if we'd go to Scenario, if we go to Scenario, has 616 student capacity. Our campus capacity right now is 912. We got about 13 mobile classrooms over at Southwest Elementary right now. Our current enrollment is 812. And we have pre-K over there taking some of the other mobile classrooms. So our enrollment with Scenario 1 will reduce that by five students, down to 807, which is nominal. But then we, Scenario 2, it takes it down to about 18 students, which is a classroom, which is good. And then Scenario 3 would be 18 students as well. Meadowview Elementary, brick and mortar, 686 students. Campus capacity with mobile classrooms, we have 772. Our current enrollment is 752. It would stay that way unless we do Scenario 3, and it'll take it to 701. Does that make sense? All right, so some key items I want to talk about then is by building the new school, we're, we're accomplishing several things, and they're good things, okay? We're reducing the overcrowding at Dixon Elementary School. That's important. I mean, we've got mobile classrooms all over the place, and core, core capacity at the school is well beyond its limits. So this makes a better instructional environment for Dixon Elementary School by building the new school. Fifth grade will move back into an elementary school. Right now, we have so many students at Dixon Elementary School. I think many of you are already aware of this. But we couldn't, we couldn't put, put them all in there. So we had to break it up, and we had to put fifth grade at Dixon Middle School. While Dixon Middle's a great, Middle School is a great school, it's not, it's not, it wasn't built for fifth grade. We're doing a great job making it work, but it's better if we can have the elementary school students K through 5 in one, in one setting. Also, it provides for additional growth. We know that we're going to have increased, increased number of students coming into the Stump Sound area. And based on 900 Marines coming in, just based on 900 Marines coming in, historically, that usually equates to about 150, 200 students, okay? It just depends on the, the demographics. I mean, how old they are. If they're more senior enlisted, then you'd have more elementary school students coming in. If they're, if they're E1 through E4, a lot of times they're not married yet or have children. So these are some of the things that we look at. But we anticipate about 150 students right now. We don't know for sure what it's going to look like until the Marines come in. And that, and that's, they're anticipating start bringing the Marines in for Marsoc West right around the, the summer, fall timeframe of 2021. So we'll know when the school opens up, basically what we're seeing for a growth based off of Marsoc West. The one thing I want to make sure everybody knows too is, and this is important, the redistricting doesn't go into effect until August 2021. Next year, we're not moving students, changing district lines for the students, okay? So if you have a child that's in fifth grade, it's not going to impact them. If you have a child currently in fourth grade, it's not going to impact them. If a child that's in third grade, it may impact them. Now, I've told you all the, all the technical stuff, but this is the neat stuff right here. This is a brand-new school. It's built in a similar model as Richlands Elementary School. You guys may not have seen it before. But one of the things that we did in addition to make sure that this school was built for the coast is the wind load rating on this, this new school is going to be 150 miles per hour. Highest wind rating we have on any school. Another thing we got is high-impact, large object, high-impact resistant glass. So if a hurricane comes in, 100, 110 mile-per-hour wind with a 2x4, it's not going to break the glass. The other thing we're going to do is because we want to make sure it's, it's beneficial to the community as a whole outside of the school hours is we're putting a large generator in there that can power the whole school in case we have power outages. We all remember Hurricane Florence. For this school right here, if we'd lose power, we'll turn the generators on. The county will turn the generators on, and we can use that as a shelter. It, with 150 mile-per-hour wind, probably around category 3. And that's something that county, now, I say that, but that's something the county would have to make that decision on if they decide to make it a shelter, okay? But we built it, working with the county, in the process of making sure it's fortified in case we need to use it as a shelter in the future. So it's a good thing. So the next steps, okay? Didn't have to take notes, and if you did, I should have told you this earlier. But we put all the, all the presentation on our website, okay? And that's at www.onslow.k12.nc.us/SESP, Southern Elementary School Project. You wonder where that name came from. Look, everybody can have an acronym, okay? If you have additional information or questions or comments, please feel free to let us know, okay? Because what we'll do is, and you sent it to us by email at All right, we're going to bring it to the board next week and get their input on it as well. And they may make a decision at that time which options to look at. One of the things we're looking at when we look at the options that I stress is, I don't want to overcrowd the school just before Marsoc comes in. In 2022, we're going to have another school built over by, off of Highway 24, 258. And we'll be doing another redistricting. And in that, in that timeframe, we'll have a better feel for what's happening with the, with the base too. So if we, if we want to bring in some additional students at that point in time because we're not filling up the school, we can do that. But it gives, it gives us a year to look at it, is what we're saying before we do that. Because we'll have to do another redistricting, another redistricting in 2022 anyway. Let's see what the growth is going to be in the Stump Sound Township just to make sure that we don't overfill and have to put mobile classrooms in prematurely. Any traffic maps? Okay, the question was, are there any traffic maps? And yeah, we have traffic maps. We do, even before we started and selected the site, we did a traffic impact analysis. And we brought in some engineers and DOT to work on it very closely to make sure that we looked at the traffic flow that was anticipated. We're making some changes to the roadwork in that area. One thing that we're going to be doing is working with DOT to work on 17 so people can go down Folkestone Road. And then we'll be looking at doing some turn-ins and turn-outs on Folkestone Road as well. So there is traffic maps and plans already in place. You will be able to, the way it's working right now. And the question is, is will I be able to, when I leave the school, if I turn left, go up Folkestone Road, will I be able to get to Wilmington? And the answer would be yes. Right now, we're looking at doing a signalized, signal light on 17. And the engineers are doing the final design of it right now. I know in the future, DOT has been talking about doing a super freeway, I believe it's well called, or expressway, and where they're doing turnarounds. Right now, that only goes up to Old Folkestone Road, from Old Folkestone Road up to 210. So Folkestone Road doesn't have that. So we'll be using a signalized light until, until that time the DOT decides to do something different. But for the next several years, they should be able to, be able to turn left off of Folkestone Road to 17. Off the original Folkestone Road. Right. That's right. An old Folkestone Road wouldn't make sense, it's too close. But Folkestone Road is, is over 1,000 feet away. It's, I mean, several thousand feet away. So it's, it's, DOT has looked at it, and we've done a traffic impact analysis on it as well. I understand. I understand. Understand. Any other questions? We're here as a group, I mean, Onslow County Schools staff is here as a group to answer any questions you want. I mean, the presentation is pretty much over. It's, it's on the website, you can look at it. If you have, if you have any information you wanna give us, please send it to us in email. And if you have any details you wanna look at, just contact us. Okay, we'll help you out any way we can. Or we will stay here as long as you guys want to answer any questions you have. Yes, ma'am?
When's the expected actual adoption of the redistricting?
The actual adoption of the redistricting is August 2021.
So we won't know the lines officially?
Oh, the adoption? There's a chance, I mean, we're gonna bring it to the board next week. There, there is a good chance they'll vote on it at that point in time. But it's, it's the board's discretion in that process. And remember, what we're looking at is, this is, this, this redistricting right here, while nobody likes to be moved around, this redistricting right here is taking the Dixon Elementary School district zone right now and making it better. Okay? So you're gonna have students going to Dixon Elementary that don't have, don't have to go into the mobile classrooms like they had in the past. You have a new school that people can take advantage of as well. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a win-win overall. And like I said, the other two scenarios that we're looking at are, are very minimal impact on us as well.
Are there teachers wise, are we gonna need obviously more as always?
Well, next, the question is, are we gonna need more teachers? Okay, and the answer is, we need teachers every year. Yeah, yeah. And, but, but at the same time, remember, our teachers are based on student population. So if Dixon Elementary School, I'm gonna use round numbers right now. If Dixon Elementary School has twelve hundred students, let's say it was twenty, twenty students per teacher, that's gonna be sixty students, I mean, sixty teachers, right? If they shrink down to six hundred and thirty-eight or six hundred, then that takes it down to thirty and the other school gets the other thirty. So basically, the teachers will follow the students. Now, that being said, every year we have transition. And so some, some teachers may wanna stay at the school, some teachers may wanna move to another school. Some may be moving because they're with the military. So we have transition every year. And then also we have the fifth graders here, fifth grade teachers here that will be able to come around. Yeah. And bus drivers. Now, that's the other thing to talk about, and I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah, we always hurt for bus drivers. But no matter which way we go, think about this. Dixon Elementary School's right here. Look, look where they're going right now to transport back and forth. Dixon Elementary School in this process will have short bus routes. All right? It's more, it's more densely populated in that area, so it'll be shorter bus routes. And as a matter of fact, Southern, the new Southern Elementary School will have shorter bus routes because they're not going all the way over to Sneed's Ferry Shores. So we're actually gonna see shorter bus routes for the kids. So that's another benefit of this redistricting right now. Am I saying that right? You're the bus coordinator. Right. Uh huh. And that's if we use Scenario Three. So. Any other questions? Thanks. She did great. I'm telling you what, she did great. Yeah. So, well, listen, guys, thanks. I appreciate you coming and stuff. And what we wanted to do, and I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it, we're taking, we wanna make sure we get the information out to you guys early in the process because we know it impacts families. And we don't like impacting families without giving you early, early warning and be transparent as possible, let you know what we're doing. This time around, it's a year and a half out before we actually see it happening. But we wanna make sure you guys are aware of it. Okay? And as we go forward, if we see something that has to be adjusted, one or two students or a road here or there, we may tweak it a little bit, but for the most part, this is what we're looking at as far as the scenarios. All right, thank you.